Hello. Good evening to the Select Board meeting of March 11, 2024. It is 6:00 PM. We have moved our time up by a half an hour to all our fans out there. You're gonna have to come earlier. It coincides with daylight savings time, right?
That's the best way to do it.
Would you join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Open forum. Is anybody here for open forum? Seeing no one, we'll close open forum and we will go into our joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. You guys wanna come up and open your meeting? Hello? So you need to formally open your meeting.
Oh, well, make a motion to formally open the meeting?
Yeah.
Anybody want to second that?
I second.
Okay.
It's a false vote.
So we are here for a discussion and vote to appoint Sue Malloy as a member of the Board of Assessors for the period. This is a long appointment, Sue. Are you sure you're up for the challenge? March 5, 2024 until the annual town election on May 18, 2024.
We'll treat her well until then.
Big commitment.
Have you picked up your papers yet, Sue?
Well, I guess you could point someone again.
She has to run.
But she's saying, like, what if nobody runs?
Then you would, you'd have to do this process again.
Right, same thing.
She's only being, she would only get a lot.
That's fine, I get, I get it. I just wanted to ask that one question, I apologize.
So if you choose to run, you would just then be running for the remainder of the term, but is this?
For another two years.
No, for the next two.
For two more years, because this is one year in.
Yeah, something you can see, I guess, as a two-year clause from the.
It goes with the person that resigned.
Because they keep it at three, 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 so there's a new person.
That's how they keep it staggered correctly.
So she needs to have her papers filled.
Right.
If you plan on running, you would need to do that. We'll help you get signatures.
You're in a dire need to have three people with some, just a lot of things that have been happening within our office, so that's why we had discussed and chose it. You brought it up that last meeting if we, you know.
Whether you wanted to wait or move forward.
Got some big, I guess, yeah, abating conversations and things like that, that it'd be good to have three people's eye on that.
Okay. Questions?
No, I think for someone that brought this town through the pandemic almost single-handedly, whatever she wants.
This could just be the beginning of your political career. You, you could sit up here someday.
God bless you. Talk to us first.
Peter, you've worked with Sue more than any of us.
For a little bit, for a little bit. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's great. It's good to see you back, obviously. And, you know, even for the short period of time, I think jumping into the role and getting your.
MBW.
Exactly. It's, uh, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be good to see. I was excited when Paula had mentioned it, so congratulations and welcome back.
Yeah. I echo what they said. I think it's great. Want to make a motion?
Yeah, I will. I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Sue Malloy as a member of the Board of Assessors for a period of three, five, 24 through the next annual town election, which is five, 18, 24.
Second.
Now, did they also?
Each person has.
Do we do one vote or do you?
Each, you, you have one vote.
Okay.
The five of you, each of you have a single vote.
Okay.
Technically, you would vote in nominations to fill a vacancy. You've done so. Any other nominees? So you close nominations, great. And then you, in fact, have a vote to choose someone. Each of you has one vote.
Okay. So you're voting with us.
Definitely voting.
All right.
Favor?
I am voting.
Any further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
I did want to say one thing.
Of course.
We really appreciate Curtis Gluck the last 22 years he's given us.
Long time.
Real professional, good soul. We're really gonna miss him.
Totally.
Yep, that's a long time.
Thank you, Curtis, wherever you are.
All right.
He's in Plymouth. Are there, I'm moving to Plymouth.
I don't know why.
I don't know why.
Anyway, so you need to vote to close your meeting, unless you're continuing your meeting.
No, no, no.
We are, but at six fifteen.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Say a second.
There you go.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue.
We're very lucky to have her.
Thanks, Sue.
Thank you.
She's not gonna go to the meeting.
She is, so she's.
We'll give her a letter.
Don't forget to get sworn in before you go to your first meeting.
I have to go back to my other job right now, but I will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have to wait until 6:45 for our public hearing, so we'll go to action items.
Sure.
All right.
We may have to, we may have to take a.
Right, we have to do a little song and dance, right? We'll go real slow. Approve the minute. February 26, 2024, Select Board's meeting.
Oh, second.
Talk about taking a long.
All I can think of is taxi.
Right, yeah, right.
Slow down. How I can say it any slower? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approve but not release the minutes of the February 26, 2024 Select Board Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Approve the request from Chief, Fire Chief Timothy Herron for the quarterly ambulance billing abatements through February 2024 in the amount of $27,177, $177.52.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to accept, proclaim deed and executive page three received from JSC for the road to the landlocked town property.
Second.
Any discussion? What is this?
I don't think so.
Oh, this is, okay, so go ahead.
Sorry.
So we have the North Central, North Central, North Bedford Street sewer line.
Oh, okay.
And as part of the work, you know, agreements that we have with JSC, one of those agreements was that we would be able to put an access road in from North Bedford Street through what there was their property into the landlocked parcel that the town has owned for a number of years.
Okay.
This is Rob's property.
This makes the parcel available for development either by the town or if the town at some point wanted to sell it, then someone else could make use of it.
Okay.
But the only way of doing that was to have this road, and in which case we now get the easement for doing so.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion and vote to approve signage requests for Kiwanis to put up signs on the town property, March 11, 2024 through April 7, 2024, to advertise the annual pancake breakfast.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We've got two additional items over here. Point John Haynes and Lynn Lumbergh to serve on the Board of Directors for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative with no designated tenant.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got a discussion and a possible vote on land donation located on Washington Street, map 37, parcel two.
Second.
Discussion.
Charlie?
Charlie?
So if you have the letter from the owner, Richard Bierdorf.
Better off, I think, is.
I think back a certain time, he had thoughts about trying to develop the property and those fell through. But he's maintained ownership of the property. The taxes on it, however, now amount to, I believe, over $100,000. And you'd say, well, then why should we take, why would we accept a donation of the property in that, in that case? Well, the reason is because if we go through the foreclosure process, we'll still be owed the taxes and we'll pay far more to go through the tax on foreclosure process than would we go through for accepting a donation of land. There's a possibility, I think, you know, we'd have to have our staff go out and look at the town hall staff to see, in fact, how developable it might be, how much of it is wet, et cetera, how much can it perk, et cetera. But there, I think there's a potential for development which could then offset, if we sold it, the 100,000 or so that are owed. There's no guarantees about that, but I always recommend accepting the property rather than going through the foreclosure process.
Six eight is down there, so we might be worth something.
But I don't know whether you want, we've gotten one comment from the Concom outside of the Collector's Office giving us the heads up on the amount of taxes owed. I didn't know whether you wanted to wait a couple more weeks to hear back to see if anybody else responded to Rebecca's request for comments.
What do you think?
Yeah, it won't hurt to hold off until next meeting anyhow.
Yeah, I mean, the interest, it's an interesting letter, that's for sure. So, I mean, it doesn't sound like he's interested to do anything.
Nope.
No.
At all, so, I mean, again, we can certainly pass it over right now and take a look, but, I don't see anything happening if this is the direction he's looking at, well.
We want to be sure before we do it, so let's wait. Okay?
All right.
We're not saying no, we're saying not right now. Anything else?
Yeah, one more. No, that's it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is for the, the hearing.
Great, thank you. Rebecca, announcements?
Unfortunately, I don't.
Okay.
Pancake breakfast.
I mean, Charlie, I know you have updates, but we can always do executive and then come back for the 6:45, right?
Sure.
Executive would take longer than that?
It won't, it's five, one, five, another, doesn't matter.
Let's get through the.
Let's do this and then see where we are.
Just fiscal '25 budget, the Finance Committee started its budget review with the various departments. East Bridgewater Public Schools will have a public comment period on its budget tomorrow, so we'll have a release. It's not the budget because it hasn't been approved by the school committee yet, but at least we'll have a much better idea of what is likely to be asked for.
That's that public hearing that they require to do every year?
Yes. There is obviously a significant gap between what's available for this year, coming year, and what's been requested. When I talked to the Finance Committee last week, not that they took any votes, but the sentiment seemed to be more towards not using additional money from the stabilization funds to help fund the gap, not completely fund the gap, but even partially fund the gap. Like I said, there's no vote, there's no, there wasn't anything definitive from them, but I didn't get an indication of anyone being favorable towards doing that. I got at least one, if not two, indications of not being faithful to doing that. So I'll be seeing them again tomorrow. Maybe they'll come back with something a little bit more definite at that point. And I'll go into executive session a little bit more about the impact it might have on contracts and personnel costs. Central Elementary School, on February 28, the Massachusetts School Building Authority approved East Bridgewater for feasibility study and schematic design for improvements to the Central Elementary School. School Building Committee and sub-companies will send down, will send a draft request for services to the MSBA in the next few days with the hope that the town will be able to issue what's called that Request for Services, or RFS, or an Owners Project Manager, or OPM. We're gonna have lots of acronyms at the end of March. Once it's issued, the building committee will interview various firms, select one, and then if the schedule holds, meet with the MSBA in early June for review and approval. Once you get that done, that all happens, the next step is then hiring the design firm. So it's going, it's gonna take, we're not going to see doors opening on the new Central or the renovated Central, whatever, for five or six years, given the MSBA's likely timetable of all the steps in the process, because the feasibility study and schematic design take something on the order of a year and a half to two years. So it's probably gonna be a three-month, probably saying September for having signed on the dial line a design firm. So then we're talking March of 2026 to, at the earliest, if not September of 2026, to finish the design work and move on to the next step, which would then you, you go out and get the construction drawings done, you've gotta go out to bid, you've gotta get the work done. So 29 or 30 would be like, if everything works according to plan, even on the schedule, that's what we're looking at.
Okay.
But we are making progress, we're not standing still. Master plan, the committee continues to work with OCPC on developing a new master plan. Last one was written in 1988, held a virtual public forum last Wednesday, will hold a regular meeting two days from now, Wednesday night here at Town Hall. Tomorrow, March 12, is the last day to complete the survey form. It's available online via the town's website and paper copies is also available here at Town Hall, the Library and the Council on Aging. Central Street property, the assessors and the treasure collector are working on this. This is the sort of mirror twin or whatever of the property the town sold on the north side of Central Street back a few years ago. They're in the process of putting all the documents and working with the auction firm and working with our title attorneys to complete the descriptions and such so that we can sell the land, more than likely August, give or take. MBTA zoning, the planning boards held discussions about various options to bring the town into compliance with the state statute. Municipal officials will be meeting with staff from OCPC in early April to review the town's progress. Planning board hopes to bring proposals to a special town meeting in the fall with a public comment period before then, so. Roy was there at the track meeting last week and brought everybody there up to date. We were hoping to always have OCPC there at that meeting. Didn't work out because of scheduling problems, but we'll have them for this first meeting in April, so they can provide additional guidance to the town, to the planning board and town officials as to the best way we should go in terms of provide, creating options and presenting them to the townspeople, but as I said, for a likely vote this fall. The deadline for us, for submission is December 31, 2024, so we still have some time to get all that done. You know, your town meeting ward, special town meeting ward, Rebecca's working with town council, preparing the first drafts of the wards, with the town meeting on May 13. I believe the early draft has been submitted to the three of you, not for approval, but more just review, so you're aware of what's likely gonna be on the ward and if you think there's something missing, this is a good time to tell Rebecca that. And then also the ADA Self-Evaluation Transition Project. Con centers receive responses from most of the departments on this project. They continue to receive surveys from the general public. We had staff visit municipal buildings and grounds last week to review the infrastructure in the buildings, and my hope is we'll get that project completed by this summer. That's what I've got.
All right. Thank you. Well, it's 6:18.
Yeah.
You can get executive.
Oh, easy.
Up to date and we'll come back.
Oh, yeah.
For the hearing?
We may even have to take a recess for a little while.
Okay. You guys good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Want to take us into executive?
All right, so pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for the negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-personnel, non-union personnel, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer, Director of Assessing, IT Director, Town Accountant, Town Administrator, Treasure Collector. Pursuant to Mass General Law, 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares firefighters, superior officers, clerical, TBW dispatches, superior officers, parole officers, and library. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter A, Section 21A9, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation as the chair has determined that the open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigation position in a matter involving town of East Bridgewater versus Ritter Farm. I, Peter Skidunn, Jr.
I, David Shidi.
I, Carol Julius. We will be returning to open session.
Are all of you here for the 6:45 or for anything else?
Oh, we, we saw 6:30 on our document, sorry about that.
Well, just to explain, we're gonna be going into executive session, we're gonna come back. At least what we have is that we posted for 6:45 and we're stuck with doing that, even though we, you know.
We have no other.
It's a normal meeting, you know, a normal appointment or something, but when we had to put ads in the paper and all that, we're stuck with the 6:45.
No worries.
We're gonna go next door, come back, we may even still have to have a recess for a little while, and then when 6:45 happens, we'll be able to have the hearing.
Yeah, that's fine, no problem.
But you're here for.
Are you guys here for that, too? Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Good, okay. And we're back, just like that. And it is 6:45. Peter, do you want to read the public hearing notice?
Sure. Notice hereby given pursuant of requirements of Mass General Law, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held relative to the application, new license, general, on-premise, annual, all alcohol for mistletoe events LLC, Nicole Gruber, manager, premises are at 254 Whitman Street. Public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, first floor conference room, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Monday, March 11, 2024, at 6:45 PM.
Okay. I see that, you're Megan, right? You want to come on up to the table and?
Matt.
Hi, Matt, how are you?
Good, you?
Okay, so tell us what you're hoping to do here.
Yeah, absolutely. Hello, everyone. So we have already been through all the necessary avenues to be able to hold weddings at our venue, and we are looking to apply for a liquor license now. You know, as we did some investigating and figured out what we needed to have from caterers coming in, we realized this is an opportunity for us to generate more revenue to put back into our business rather than having caterers come in with their 12C license and serve alcohol. It's something that we're hoping to be able to do so that we can continue investing into our farm. You know, my entire teacher income gets invested back into the property, mass construction income, and everything that we generate from Christmas trees is always going back into the property. So any way we can generate a little extra revenue to continue planting trees and expanding the farm business is, is good for us, so.
Okay. Questions?
Not yet.
No, I guess we can see if there's any general public questions.
Okay, so there's a lot of people here in the room. Are there people that want to speak on this issue? Anybody? You're all just here as supportive neighbors?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and, but you know what, though, in all honesty, like, what a great testament that is to the two of you.
Yeah, that's great.
Because we do licenses, you know, hearings like this all the time, and, you know, if people, usually the only people that come are people that are upset and don't want something to happen. So to have all these people in this room because they support you and want to see this vision that you have, like, come to life, I think that's awesome, so kudos to you guys.
Thank you.
Obviously being good neighbors. Oh, wait, wait, hold on.
Can I speak very briefly?
Yes, of course.
I'm their immediate next-door neighbor.
Okay.
I'm 100% behind you, I think. Fantastic venue. It's good for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Greg.
Excellent.
And Greg's an awesome neighbor, by the way.
All right. Well, the neighbors are all for it, so.
Yeah, I guess my only question would be hours, you looking for, like, just weekends or what's the plan going forward, I guess?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So our wedding events would just be happening on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then when we're open for the Christmas sale season, you know, we're open on weekdays, too, but my vision is that liquor sales would only happen on the weekends, not during the weekdays. And then for every event where we have liquor, I talked with Sergeant Grillo, he's amazing, you know, very supportive, giving me great feedback. I would also have a police detail, and that's gonna be part of my contract for any brides and grooms wanting to get married at the venue, that they do have to have the police detail there, so.
That's my question down to.
Yeah. And is this just seasonal or is this gonna be year-round?
Well, we'll plan to have weddings year-round, you know, obviously during the Christmas sale season.
With Christmas weddings?
Yeah, I know, it'd be so nice, but our priority does have to be Christmas trees. You know, we're, really, this is about farming, so we need to have that be our main focus. You know, if we could do a New Year's wedding or something along those lines, that's something that we're open to, you know, maybe once the sale season ends, but, yeah, any time from, like, oh, the beginning of November all the way through Christmas, we, we just have to be really devoted to that, so. But off, off-season for us, it'd be great to have this extra revenue coming in, so.
What's the capacity again?
Well, we're setting a limit at 120, I think we had said, right? 100 for the first floor, right. 100. If someone wanted to extend beyond that, we'd have to think about a pop-up tent or something like that outside, but we're really just planning on doing smaller-sized weddings in our space.
But in the event that we went over, we would be, we would be doing the event, let's see, event, one-day permits.
Oh, yes.
Okay, special permit.
Yeah.
In the event that we go over, we'll be applying for that. In the event that we go over, we'll also be bringing in portable.
Restrooms.
Not, not portable, yeah.
Fancy kind?
The trailers.
We know the ones.
Yes, exactly, yep.
And that was the step, you know, because we went before the border health already with all that.
Okay.
Great.
Great. Any other questions?
No, I think they, they got it down.
Yeah, excited for you guys. And, and you keep saying weddings, so, but like, if somebody wanted to have a different kind of anniversary party or.
Yeah, birthday party.
Small family reunion, something like that, you're open to events.
Absolutely.
Funeral, is that what you said?
Funeral, yeah, it's actually a big thing.
Yeah.
Well, let's go for the.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
We'll have yours.
That's it, right.
Happy things, you know.
I know what you're saying.
Celebrations of life, that's what they call it. So there's the word.
I'm in the business, you know.
You do a referral situation.
I need some gossip.
All right, if everybody is set, then.
Are the hours definite in the application? Because the license itself will specify the hours. And it'll have any problem with what, what the hours are, but they need to be definite in the application itself, if they require the license.
Not sure, I filled that out, so I'm not sure.
Oh, no.
I don't remember seeing it.
No, I didn't either.
Because as an example.
You need to put that in?
Yeah, because different rules go into effect if you're, depending on how late you're open. you're open. I don't think you're gonna be open to 1 o'clock in the morning, but that's an example.
I don't see it in here.
So, do you want to, do you want to specify now how, what times you want to be open? I mean, even if it's from, you know, noon to 11 o'clock, or whatever you're picking?
They go broader than you think you need.
Okay. Do you want to do, like, 12 to 12, or?
Yeah, 12 to 12. 12 to 1. Can we go to 1? What's the thing?
I have no idea what the, I was...
I believe it's midnight.
What's the maximum amount? Let's just go to the maximum.
24 hours?
That's a good point.
You might want to...
Okay, yeah.
You could have some early hours.
I was gonna suggest that, too, because somebody might want to do a brunch.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
A shower, or something.
We can always change the, they can always come back for...
They could come back to...
Whatever hours now, and then you can come back and, or at least put in for us to have a...
Liquor sales can start at 9.
9.
9 to 12?
12.
Except for Sundays, I think you're restricted.
Yeah, Sundays, I think you have to do it differently.
Nays can come in at 8.
Stay, stay over if you want.
Two spare rooms.
We got that, two spare rooms?
And the other part, I mean, do you, just wanted to stuff on the record, have you had previous experience with serving alcohol before?
We have not, but we are, but we both took the tips course, so that's done under our belt. And we would be hiring people for the service of alcohol that are also tips certified and experienced at bartending.
Looks like I have a note here that Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Friday, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and Sunday, noon to 1:00 AM. Those are the hours per the ABCC.
Okay.
So, if you want to do that.
Is that okay with everybody else?
That's what's on every license.
Perfect, thank you.
That way you don't have to come back.
We never approved doing earlier than noon, here in East Bridgewater.
We had a couple people come in, and we just did a special for them, not specific to them, like Kenny O'Briens did a brunch on Sunday.
Okay.
Might be another one, but I'm not sure. But, yeah, we didn't do all over the board, just specific.
And if they ever wanted to do, like, say, a Thursday or something, they could come in and do that one?
Well, what I would do is...
A Monday special license?
I, I would recommend that you just extend the normal Saturday hours, whatever, for the rest of the week, yeah, or aside from Sunday.
Or Friday hours.
Because that, I mean, you shouldn't have to keep coming in every time you find, okay, we're gonna have us something that didn't quite fit the hours.
Oh, yeah.
You'll have to keep coming back, yeah.
Can we, can we just go by the states?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Whatever.
Yep, perfect. Okay, anything else?
There's just one...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, just one contingency. Should I should put this in the record, too?
Yep, so, yeah, this is, there was a contingency brought to us by the...
From the Fire Department. The contingency is basically, I'll read it as it's written here. contingency upon if the occupancy use is changed in accordance with the current fire and building regulations in place at the time of issuance. No alcohol shall be served until such fire and building requirements are met, and the final inspection is completed by the Fire and Building Departments.
Right, yeah, I read that, too. And that's all being done in this permit that got pulled the other day, so.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Good.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, and now we'll take the official vote.
Yep. I'll make a motion to give a permit for the hours stated by the state, I guess is basically what we'll say, for Mistletoe Events LLC, premises at 254 Whitman Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I look forward to following it all on social media.
Absolutely. Well, we'll let you know when we have the open house.
Oh, yeah, we'll be down. Thanks for coming in, everybody.
Have a good night.
How are you?
Sheedy, sir.
How are you? That's retirement.
It's good.
I bet it is. Sounds good to me. All right, I don't think we have, oh, board discussions. David? Peter, anything?
Yeah, it's one is, first one, I just want to make mention of, Charlie had mentioned it, that the school is doing that budget hearing tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, yeah, at the, at the middle school. So, usually at the high school, but there's an event going on, I guess.
Oh, okay.
So, just so that everybody knows that, and it's important. Any update on our payroll discrepancy? Are we still working on that?
We're gathering documents at this point.
All right, still looking for that. And then the evaluation, you have to, do you...
I have to do mine.
Okay, all right. So, as long as you know that, I am good.
I'm good.
All right, motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Good night, everybody. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I can't believe him.